The first item we're going to view is the meridian. I know that everyone's here, so I'd like to come forward and state your name for the breakfast.
Do you want to go together? Matt?
We're monitors.
Well, that was a good part.
Okay.
I'll try to be as loud as I can. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Jennifer Kinnaird, replacing Stephen Lai, the Armani Allen, on behalf of the applicant, meridian suburb. Pretty civil application we're dealing with. Meridians proposing certain improvements to the property, looking at where everybody's familiar with, we've watched you. We're proposing to replace the building's facade as a result of a failure of the existing stucco plating system. It has demonstrated over the years, failure throughout the life of the building, most specifically cracks, wall bulging, water infiltration into residential units. This will also address certain safety concerns of the deteriorating facade, and also will reduce the cost of building it as partial placement or sporadic repairs through the course of the life of the building over the years. We're seeking planning board approval per section 266-683 of your code, which requires second-hand approval for a change in the building facade. We followed up with the board secretary regarding any missable comments. We were advised that only the building department responded with no comment. I have with me this Stephen Lang, the architect. If there's no other house, can you bring them up to protect the plans?
So I can just have your name again?
Jennifer. I'll spell my last name, K-N-A-R-I-C-H.
Thank you.
Yep. So we put together a couple of renderings. I'll come up here too. As mentioned, the existing facade is stucco. There's been numerous issues since it was originally constructed back in 2008, so it had been in place very long, and the community has had weeks since it was originally built. I believe in the last year, they've spent over $200,000 remediating some of those issues, and they haven't addressed everything. At this point in time, they're looking at a complete facade replacement. They naturally don't want to put stucco back, and I can understand that, I can certainly respect that. If you have a system that has failed, why would you want to put the same thing back up? There's deficiencies in the installation. Essentially, it's originally installed a barrier system, there's no means for relief of the moisture that's there. The detailing was very poor, the ceiling choice poorly detailed. Essentially, what was happening is that you're getting moisture trapped behind the stucco. There's really not much of a drainage point behind the stucco, and essentially traps that moisture in there, and so there's going to be extensive damage when we do the project for sheathing, and it's extreme hardship on the community. Costs are going to be very, very high to go in and replace damaged sheathing. They have to reboot or resettle all the windows, there's a lot of work that's going in there. So obviously, cost is a major factor at play here. With that being said, they want to go with vinyl siding. It's a proven product that meets all the building code requirements for the size of the building, it's five stories. We've checked out all of the wind loading requirements and everything else, fire rating, so it's completely compatible with what they're required to perform to. It's less expensive, but at the same time, they're not going with the builder's grade vinyl, which would be an O40, they're doing an O42 siding. And they're basically trying to maintain the existing aesthetics throughout the neighborhood. And color scheme's going to be very similar to what they have, so I would assume that a month down the road after the project's completed, people will drive by and they'll just think that it was always like that. So the number of buildings in the area, we went through and driven by, taking pictures of them, that also have vinyl siding, so it's going to fit right in with the existing fabric of the community. Essentially, here's the building, and then here we put together some renderings that essentially show you the existing conditions, and then what it's going to look like proposed. And as you can see, and I'll pass this around so you guys can see it up close, and I brought some copies for you guys, because I know you were looking for a couple of signed and sealed copies. But essentially, based upon the renderings, you'll see that the color scheme is very similar, it's just a different material, that's really it. And vinyl siding is a great product. Stucco, there's a lot of problems with installation of stucco throughout New Jersey. It's just poorly installed quite often, and it can lead to problems. Because it doesn't really have drainage, it traps that moisture, it's just a system that they're not comfortable putting back. Vinyl siding drains much better, promotes proper drainage, gets that moisture out away from the building, dries the building out, there's far fewer problems with buildings that have vinyl siding. So essentially, that's what we're proposing. I know that you guys have to take a look at the aesthetics and if they're approval, but that's the approach that we're taking for looking if you guys agree that it's basically kind of a like-for-like installation with just slightly different materials.
Anyone have any questions? You're also going to be redoing the pool deck, as I understand it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I want them to all know that. We met with a few people a couple of weeks ago when we filled this in, Rich and I.
The pool deck, that's something that just needs to be done as part of the general maintenance, there's a waterproofing that needs to be replaced, and we're also going to be redoing waterproofing on the valve gates. There's going to be no change essentially with those in terms of a visual aspect, but again, that's a good point, because it is a financial cost that these folks need to incur, and they're all, you know, you're not supposed to have to completely replace your siding after 12, 13 years. So these folks are already having to bear an undue hardship in terms of the costs, and we're just trying to minimize that as much as possible. Last thing that you guys want is more closures and issues with residents not being able to pay for a project like this, and so we're just trying to take a very practical approach to that.
And it's not the first time they're trying to remediate this too, or they're just thinking that.
Yes, correct. It's been an ongoing issue, and they've been unfortunately throwing good money after that. And that's, we just want to get it done, and they want to get back to, you know, just enjoying their home.
And those are the...
Yeah, these are the materials, and again, you can see in the renderings, it's going to be a similar aesthetic appearance. And like I said, I brought, I believe you were advised to bring some signed and sealed copies, please, just so you guys have a spare file. I don't know what you want to say. Stephen Lang, I have a business card, it helps. I'm a registered architect with the Department of Public Health.
Does anybody have any comments for the public?
If you wanted the motion to approve, it's a type-two action, so no further environmental review necessary, waiving formal site plan and assessing for a public hearing given the circumstances.
It's not going to go on the machine?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm very... I was saying, it's a, would be appropriate to entertain a motion that would be, and it's a type-two action under SECRE, and waive the necessity for a formal public hearing and site plan, given the nature of this just being a facade change, and that's authorized by the Code, and if appropriate, if you feel that's appropriate, you can ask for a motion being approved on what I just said.
Motion to approve, based on what you just said? I'll give you a motion. You have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Good luck. I know you're actually starting everything. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Do we have to leave for any formal closing meeting? I go to a lot of these different states too, so I'm curious.
They got to go to the building yet.
The permits, yeah. We can just go. Okay, thank you.
Go your way.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Southern Sales. Please go forward, say your name and address.
First line.
So, did you get his name?
Oh, your pick is his name.
We are here for a facade change, we're looking to operate the building as well. It's meant for a bathroom, and one changes for a nice big window, it's meant for a storefront.
Last month, when, I'm not sure if you were here, but some representatives here was, there were issues with the violation.
So I would like to say back on that, first of all, it's not in that property, I had several violations in that property, that's 23 Way Avenue, coming forward, and the violations was on 20 Way Avenue. Second thing, I have called them when I got the violation, I got it by email, has the phone number on it, I called them, just the building department, I spoke to Joe, and my understanding at that point that he told me everything's taken care of, nothing we should worry about, when I called him back again, now he told me I didn't understood him, and got the person that sent out the violation to reach out to him. I explained to him my answer on it, and he asked me to do it in the emails, and I did it.
When was that?
When I sent him the email? Recently, two days ago, I believe.
And I didn't hear you, what did Joe tell you?
At that point, when I was stuck standing, he told me that it's all cleared up, he will talk...
And when did he tell you that?
That was six weeks ago, right when I got the violation.
Okay, after your representative was told at the last meeting that it wasn't clear, so what happened after that?
So after that, I called Joe again, and he advised me that I didn't understood him, I don't know what it means, I explained it again, he got the guy that wrote the, wrote the violation to reach out to him.
And have you heard from that person?
I explained him, I can explain here as well, what my thing is again, the answer on the violation, the violation is that he owns a lease operating in 23 Avenue, that's not true, he owns a lease that's not operating in 23 Avenue, he owns a lease as a brokerage firm, it's located at Mawa, 65 Ramble Valley Building, and all the cars, every single car that's located in 23 Avenue belongs to Southern Sales and Services.
Really? Are they registered vehicles?
They're not registered.
They have no plates on them?
They have no plates.
There's about 40 of them, and you're performing work on them? Because I go by here every day and nothing moves.
Southern Sales and Service has seven cars as well.
You're not allowed to sell cars out of that lot?
I am allowed to sell.
You're not. Your approval was, for your approval when you took over the business was, for vehicles that you were working on in Southern Sales, either body or mechanic work, not for sale of vehicles. It's very clear.
Southern Sales and Service, this is the words that stands for it, that's number one. Fix all the cars before we sell it. Two of two collision process vehicles also.
We're not dealing with two of them, we're dealing with Southern Sales.
Has the same dealership license, and I have the same dealership license as him.
There's nothing in your approval, when you took that business over, for other cars other than body and fender work and repair work? It's very plain in your approval. And I explained that to your representative last month, and I'm explaining it to you again. You are in violation, that's why they issued you a violation. Have you acted on the violation? I don't think so.
I have acted, I've spoken to him, and he didn't tell me.
Speaking with him or correcting him on two different things?
Again, you are telling me something different than he told you, and I can only go according to what he is saying, and I replied to him what he asked, and this is what I wrote in the email as well. And I do not agree to what you are saying.
Well, you don't have to.
I don't have to, you don't have to agree to what I say.
You don't have to agree to the regulations that I said to you.
What we do have agreed to is that that's 23 Avenue, and this is 23 Way Avenue, we came with our stupid facade change, and we cannot hold you up anything on 23 Avenue.
Well, that's your opinion.
That's my opinion.
That's your opinion.
Exactly.
Our opinion is you're in violation.
Well, go ahead, Jennifer.
Go ahead.
No, I was going to say, you know, there are issues, it is separate property, but it's an accessory use. The 23 is accessory to 20, correct?
20 is accessory.
20 is accessory to 23, right. So they have some relation, but with that said, the violation is the violation, it exists, it's the building department's purview to deal with the violation, whether that be, whether they take them to court, whether they take further enforcement action, whether they take them to the Supreme Court to stop the action, whether they take them to the justice court to file a charge against them, that's what the building department's purview. I, this is before this court, for approval of the sign, and that's what it is. It cannot be held up under these circumstances because of the violation.
Well, the window is not... Okay, I totally disagree, and I make a motion not to approve anything until this violation is created. Do I get a second? So these are photos I've taken today of cars on the lot, it's got wheels on wheels on the front. There is a completely different website, and when you call the number asking for the address, this is the address that's given. So there are definitely cars being sold off of this lot, as far as whether it's allowed to be done or not, I don't know one way or the other, but you can't say that cars aren't being sold on the lot. Now that said...
Well, and the other issue is, with that, you know, you may want to counsel, but the violation has been issued, you can appeal that violation to the zoning board of appeals, and it's up to that board to make a determination, so that's one avenue. The other avenue is to litigate in court if it is brought to court. I don't know that they're going to issue a violation such that it goes to court.
I will do whatever stuff to get that.
And one more thing, you have a business there selling cars, which is not legal in Southern. You never came in and said you were going to be selling cars under a different business name.
You're not selling cars under a different business name.
What is the name of the business that's selling cars? It's on there, isn't it, Rich?
Deals on Wheels.
Deals on Wheels.
I can show you all papers, everything's on Southern Sales and Services.
It seems very funny that we all have different versions of this form.
We have closed the Deals on Wheels system.
Here's your packet from the building department.
But there's still plates on the front, and the website, although the domain name has changed, it says Deals on Wheels on the website.
These wheels has a website, it's not...
Yes.
It's possible that these wheels broke this car.
What's wrong with me?
That's today, those pictures.
Today, so it's a one car. We found one car that has Wheels on it, it's possible that Wheels on Wheels broke it, this car, you sold this car.
And you have all the other cars that you're not working on, that have no registrations, no license plates.
Okay, so that's a new thing that you mentioned.
No, it's not a new thing, you know that, you're in business. These are new things, you're in business to fix cars. Cars don't drive in without registrations and license plates.
I am licensed.
No, to vehicles, not you. I have your license.
To fix cars?
Yes.
Mechanically, and bodywork, and to sell cars.
You're not licensed in that building to sell cars. If you read your approval, when you took the business over, it clearly stated, the bodywork vehicles that you're working on, and mechanical vehicles.
I heard you.
It's not, I know you heard me, but you keep going right past it and telling me your version. The law is the law, that's all I'm going to say. Your website, which is not dealsonwheels.com, it says Deals on Wheels on, it's got the logo, it's got photos of those cars on.
They are broken, those cars, that's not belonging to 23 Avenue.
That's funny, because the building in the background, there's a building in the background of...
They are broken, the cars that's owned by Sales, Southern Sales and Services, the solid operators.
So who's brokering them on property that Southern Sales and Service owns? That's what I want to see.
Anybody can broker cars that I own, I sell them for sale.
My motion stands. Do we have a second? Do we have a motion to approve the facade change?
We'll be able to hold the proof.
I'm not going to make that motion, he's doing something he's not supposed to be doing. Let him get the violations cleared up and come back.
Okay. Well, you know, that was a little... Broke one on.
I draw a motion to hold this over for one month. We did that last month, and we got nowhere. No action was taken in the 30 days. I'll make a motion to put it over till next month. Motion for management down, do we have a second?
That was a lie, I just have to correct the record.
Excuse me?
That was a lie, I just have to correct the record, that nothing was known at this date.
They're still there, all in favor of saying... Violation is still enforced.
So you should talk to the building department.
All those... You should talk to them, because they made your motion carry.
I think so.
So I suggest that you reach out to the building department, you reach out to the community enforcement, and rectify it, and then come back with the facade change.
I did this, I did this in the past, it's a shame, I'm still here, stupid facade change, it's a different matter.
I understand, but we have absolutely nothing from them saying that it was clear, so I mean, that's all we're looking for at this point. So if you've gotten something back from them saying that it was clear, please forward to us, I would love to see it, I really would.
I don't have anything back from them that's clear, but I did, right in the beginning when I got this, I took care of it right away, and I took care of it in the meantime as well.
How did you...
I reached out to them, I spoke to them, now I'm probably here, I'm getting different opinions from this guy, it's an example, that's all I'm saying.
Very good.
I'm asking for a stupid facade change, for a change of a window that shouldn't have been coming to this thing.
So, I'm asking, you said, you said that you got it, you said that you got it, you said that you got it all, that it was all handled?
I did what I need to do.
Okay, well...
Doesn't mean that they cleared it, I called, I spoke to them.
Okay, if you get a traffic summons, and you call the court...
He did speak to them.
You did, absolutely. What I'm saying is, if you get a traffic summons and you call the court, that doesn't mean that it's handled. We just need to see something that it was cleared up, that's all. I mean, that's...
They definitely didn't clear it up, I didn't get anything about it, he asked you out.
They can't clear it up, you have to clear it up. So I would contact them, just see if you can get something from them, say that the issue was resolved or whatever else, and that'll be, that'll be the end of that. All right. We have another meeting August 17th, which I'll be checking out. It's not interesting. All right, next item on the agenda, Southern Free Library. You missed it a lot, assuming you don't have any other cars parked in the parking lot. And not this yard either.
No, the Southern Free Library is not. First of all, I would like to thank the board for accommodating the library, since I think most of you know that we're under a tight window with respect to a grant that we're going to be receiving from Grand Public Hospital Libraries, just to assist us in this project. If I may, for just a moment, give you a little history lesson, so you can kind of understand what...
We respect you. I don't want to hear your most history. That's open you.
I'll make it brief, so unlike my last name, I'll make it short. The Southern Women's Club in 1920 was formed. Six years later, they started the Southern Free Library. Reason I say that is there's a symbiotic relationship between the two organizations. The Women's Club was gracious enough, because of their 100th anniversary in 2020, to make a donation to the library. But because of the pandemic, they weren't able to do it, and they're taking different forms, and what they decided to do, to acknowledge their existence, we remember it in a sense, is to purchase a gazebo, and we would like to erect that gazebo in the back of the library, and what we were thinking is to be able to accommodate the children's section, which is right there, and also extend the patio area, put some tables out there, because as you know, the library has the cafe. We will be starting probably in the fall with bridges, the organization, the county has used, all care group there, where they have disabled veterans and whatnot, they're working, so we'll be doing that. So we envision that as an opportunity for outside use, but more importantly, for children's program, to have that area, and to be able to have that gazebo, you know, weather and whatnot. So if the board has any other questions, I think that would be...
Would you have any questions? No, I know. We did get the GMF back in record time. Yeah, we did. Nice to know people. It's hard, I guess. So, no, no comments from the board? No, I have one. We have a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve. Mr. Dale?
Same thing, it would be a type-two action, and it's an amended site plan, waive the necessity for a formal site plan.
Wait, we've been that necessity for a formal site plan, I got that one.
That's what we're going to do, our motion.
That was all in my motion. All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Dale, we have a second. I have Mr. Giavatino, all in favor, say aye, all opposed, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
We'll see you there. What do you think of your finish?
We plan to have a ribbon cutting at some point, and certainly you folks will be invited as long as we're able to get it in terms of good weather, and then we'll also have other village officials there as well. But I think just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to acknowledge your clerk, and certainly the building inspector assisted us when we went there with the site plan, to make sure that we were going to be compliant with setbacks and everything else, so despite your previous applicant, we have nothing but praise, respect to the way things operate here.
Congratulations on it.
That's why I'm going to be seen.
Thank you. It's great you're working. Thank you. All right, do we have last? All right, I... I need two car sales. I need two. I need two, Robert Logistics LLC, welcome back.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here tonight, public hearing continuing on the site plan, which I think is still moving along, but as you know, we're here on last, I guess we went on Thursday, for the SECRE scoping document with comments from the public, and as you know, we, in it, we were going to place all the comments from Monta Bell that they made, after we agreed on one issue, into the scoping document that's been done, we sent to Monta Bell, they agreed with it, and your planner, Bonnie Franzen, has also agreed with it, so it's ready, we believe, for adoption tonight for the scope, and then we will get one on the DEIS.
I know Mitch Franzen is out there, do you know, maybe he said your representative has some help?
Yeah, we have no further comments.
We just got, like now, I haven't had a chance to look at it, I know, I know, Jim Sherman and Andrew have, and I just, we just want an opportunity to do it. I don't think it's going to hold anything up if we pull it over. Could you give a...
Pardon?
Do you know that we're doing that?
Yeah, oh yeah, so we have a red line, I know it's of the, you know, the copy I guess you had, I don't know if you had a chance of reading it, it's probably long.
Just got it.
We've put it all, any part of it.
Yes, we haven't even seen it, right now, I don't know if I'm talking out of turn, but they've secured the property.
We have, we purchased it today, closed. We'd like to move it along, it'll, it'll give us, you know, comfort that this is the roadmap for the, for the DEIS. If there's any issues that you think should be added later on, we would look at that and discuss it with Bonnie. We did some pretty detailed analysis on, on the scope, and this will be the table of contents. If anything comes up during the SECRE process too, we'll have to address in the FDIS and in the finding statement anyway. So if possible, and just once you give a timeline of how long you expect that to take take, just so that it's not like it's going to be next month at this stage. No, no, it'll, we'll probably get the first initial draft of the DEIS to Bonnie in probably early September, if, assuming we agree that this gets tonight, looks forward. She'll review it for any comments for completeness, so I would guess it could be your board 30 to 45 days later, probably mid, early to mid-October. Then the DEIS will have a public hearing on the DEIS, that'll probably last 30 days, I would say, into November, hopefully for a final approval around that for the DEIS, and then the FDIS will take a month or two, so we're probably into early next year.
That just draft, DEIS means draft environmental impact statement, FDIS means final environmental impact statement.
Sorry, sometimes I talk in code, I apologize.
We just heard those, those...
And there is the other, the miscellaneous section, Rob, in the, in the scope, that can add things during the process too. But it's pretty comprehensive, and Monta Bell had no more comments, and needed to misrange, but we understand.
I just wanted to put it out there so that everybody understood, it's not like...
Yeah, and this is the next, this will be the next five, six month process to go through this.
Well, do they need this approval to do demolition work?
Have you...
Not necessarily, yeah. No, unrelated, yeah.
Have you gone for a building department for demolition?
We're in, we're in the process of doing that, not yet.
Okay, so you can use some work.
Yes.
That's what I'm looking at, void holes, work, and demolition.
Yeah, this is just the outline of draft environmental impact statement, so it's set up into different categories, transportation and traffic, wetlands, all different things. So this gets us to the next step to move this along, so if, if the scope could be done tonight, I know the clients here would be very happy about that, it'll move us along, and now that we're the official owners... And now that we're the official owners, we're, you know, ready to move forward.
We want to go. We want to get going.
And again, we can add things. If you, if you think we need to study something else, we're not, we're not going to not study it if you, if you request it.
Any members of the public have any comments? Nobody has a comment? Come on. Any members of the board?
I don't, because I haven't had, I haven't even been able to open the email yet.
Is it possible, maybe you proposed this, I don't want to put you out, that if we could maybe adjourn this to next week on just this issue about the scope, can you a chance to read it?
Julian, it's not, how many, two weeks? I just, you know, I, let's, let's read it. I think two weeks.
That's fair.
We don't want to hold you up, but how many, two weeks is going to do it? If you've secured the property, if it's not going to prevent the building, you know, the demolition from the...
Sure.
There, he could get something started while we leave this. But we got it yet.
We understand. No, we don't, we don't want to, you know, be, that's fine. Which I think will be a short meeting unless you have, but if there's any comments that you have between now and then...
Send them to you.
Send them to Nelson Pope, we'll get them to us and, you know, we'll, we'll do it. But we understand that, so.
We have a motion to adjourn this to August 3rd. We give a motion to approve. Andrew Dale, we have a second. Mr. Giavatino, all in favor, say aye.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, sorry about that. All opposed. Motion carries. So we'll see you on the 3rd. We just want to look at it.
Understood.
My apologies.
No, no, we've got a lot to do, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
We'll see you on the 3rd.
Well, I have a vacation.
How good is it?
Is it during your business? I would like to, to ask, I've spoken to you quite, at the Institute of Policy, where if we don't get our information at least 10 days prior to a reading, then you have to wait till the next month, so that we don't have to just speed reading. Is there any issue?
I knew that on this one, that they were looking, you know, we obviously knew that there were, you know, the timeframes and stuff like that, but like I said, I haven't even had a chance.
No, no, I haven't either.
I don't have a chance to open up the emails or read anything, so...
Didn't you want to say something about traffic? They weren't, they weren't mentioning about traffic. Traffic, it wasn't even the 22 page, you were just saying from Monta Vella. That's part of the reason why, I just want to... We saw that the traffic story was done without trucks.
Glad we were talking about this specific plant since they left.
No, like, like Julian said, it was awful that we didn't get it early, because they had their comments in.
But I also think, you know, we are being flexible. I don't think it's asking too much for 10 days.
No, no, absolutely not.
But, you know, we've been revising that, we're flexible, we can, like, you know, we have Meridian Street, we have the library, we've been flexible, we've been flexible with the church.
And we've been doing two meetings for this project also, so. I have a motion to require applicants to have their application as required documents in 10 days in advance of our meeting day. Motion. First, Mr. Giavatino, you are the second. Second, Mr. McInerney, all in favor? All aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Dale, motion to, a second. Mr. McInerney, all in favor, say aye. All opposed. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.